I'd like to call to order our public hearing, which is the proposed secondary six-year plan for the fiscal year 23 to 24 through 2027-28. Yes. Do I need to read this?
No.
Okay. We have Joey Mullins with us from VDOT. If he'd like to give us any, make any statement, or if there's anybody in the public that has something that they would like to say they can follow behind him.
Please.
Yeah. And let me announce that if you have a public comment on our, during our public hearing, the telephone number is (276) 333-0357.
I'm Joey Mullins with VDOT in the Wise Residency. And tonight, the board has before them the proposed updates to the secondary six-year Each year, there's a certain amount of funding allocated for unpaved roads, different needs within the secondary six-year plan. For this year, this adds on fiscal year '29 and also updates estimates of allocations for each of the preceding years before that. There's approximately $38,000 in telefee funding that's available each year to allocate to projects, and approximately $90,000 for unpaved road projects that are available to add to the plan. So in looking at that, in last year's plan, we had one project that was available, or was eligible for an unpaved road project, and that was Route 644, Little Caney Ridge. So that is still shown on the plan. In addition to that project, we've also recommended adding Route 707, Lockhart Loop, as a project. And this was one, I think it's been brought up to the board. I know I've spoken with Larry and Lehman about it. And there's approximately a quarter of a mile of that road that is in the system. So this would be a project where unpaved road funding can be used for that. And that would be able to advance that project forward. And then I know the county's also interested in a few rural addition projects that I'm working with Larry and Lehman on. And those are outside of the, other than there is a placeholder for rural addition projects, as those get better defined, we would present those to the board and have those added to the plan when that goes ahead.
Hey Joey, I got a question, because I know it's been a while, but I asked this a while back in the road committee. Rocky Gap Hollow is a state road, and it's gravel all the way out. And I know I'd asked previously thinking maybe that one could be paved or something.
Okay.
But I would tell you, Lehman's working on the one that's my priority. And that's the one that you guys, I spoke to you at the last coal road gas meeting, and that was Welcome Lane.
Yeah.
That one's in, it's constantly a problem, because it's a band-aid these times we take. But I thought I'd mention, because that's another, that is a state road, that Rocky Gap Hollow.
Okay.
That's some off of Rockland.
You happen to know the route number on that one?
I don't recall it, but it's, I could look it up, but I guess not right now I can. It's on, it's got the sign where it turns around and stuff. I know it's a state road.
Okay.
I think 712, Joey, I think.
Okay. And I know, we reviewed several routes a couple of years back, and there were some of them that had such a low traffic volume, they weren't eligible. There has to be at least 50 vehicles per day on it to be eligible for the unpaved road.
Yeah, and I'm not sure on that. I know there's, I'm thinking, it's been a while, I'm thinking six or seven families live up that road.
Okay, okay.
But...
Joey, do you have the rustic road, or is it just the 40-foot right-of-way now? Is it 40?
If, so for rural addition projects, those require a 40-foot right-of-way. If it's a rural rustic project with an existing VDOT road that's already in the system, some of those just have a 30-foot right-of-way. So that's, that's if it's...
So if it's a new one, it doesn't have 40?
Yes, if it's a rural addition...
Because I have Keith Hall that needs paving, but I don't think that they can, some of them can't give a 40-foot right-of-way up through there.
Okay, yeah. And those are, any of those, and I know Welcome Lane was another one, those are the ones that I've just asked that the board work with Larry and Lehman, and I'll work with them in trying to identify possible solutions.
And I know that you guys are working on that, so. That one, I would say, is the priority in my district, is Welcome Lane, because it's just, it is always going down.
Okay.
And the last two terms is probably $20,000 with discretionary payments left there. Not, not all of it with discretionary, because one of them the county paid for.
Right, okay. Yeah, so that's, that's where we, looking at potential projects to add, we did identify this one as a road that it's sort of, I did some deed research history on this, and it's a little bit of an odd one, because it's in our system, but it's just, the mapping in our system doesn't show it correctly. So we're trying to fix that to get it to reflect the actual deeded right-of-way that's out there. But there are several homes that are served by that road, so it made a good candidate to add, to propose to add to the plan this year. And those funds, that one in Little Caney, you'll see in the plan, it's got the projected funding each year. If the board, neither one of those projects will be funded in the next two years, it's a little bit further out, but if the board decided in a later plan that they wanted to reprioritize those, or adjust that, they could, you could take that action at that time.
Is Little Caney, in addition to, like, going on towards Flat Top, that part, or the bottom part of it, because the top part's paved?
Yes, yes. This would, this would start where the pavement ends and continue, continue going further.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think we started on, I believe this project was on the southern end of that road where it starts, and working your way back down the hill where the pavement ends.
So this is, excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
Are these your proposed project on the six-year plan right here, these four?
Yes, the...
What is, what are you proposing to do on 649?
649 is an existing, that's the one that was completed.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's, it will be...
It costs $1.2 million to do that intersection there?
Yes, that was the, that was the project, and that shows the expenditures, so they'll actually be going through closeout of that project, and it'll come off of the plan, in next year's plan.
Can you just say, didn't you just say that a road had to have so much traffic on it before you considered paving it?
Yes. Yeah, and that one was eligible.
I know that road don't have that much traffic on it. How did it, how did it achieve that kind of money, $1.2 million?
Well, it was eligible, and it had revenue sharing funding on it. We went through this a couple of years ago with the board.
Yeah, I know, and I have complained about it ever since, because there's not that much traffic on that road. I don't know why that is a priority.
Well, I think the priority was the intersection part of it.
Yeah, and the improvements to it were mainly, and that's why the costs were more, is it was new alignment, they had to acquire right-of-way and things like that to do it, so.
Okay.
Well, I like it, it's in my district, and I took, I took a lot of heat over it from board members, but I tell you, it made a world of difference in that intersection.
Yeah, it's a big improvement. You can actually turn out both directions now, so that...
I'm not arguing the intersection.
But there is a lot of traffic on that road, too.
I don't think so. I've been up through there two or three times since I've talked to you, and I've yet to meet a car.
I went up through there, we were out...
It don't have 50 cars a day, I know.
All right.
That's what you said, didn't you?
Yeah, that's the requirement, and we base that off of the ADT.
Let me ask you something else, will you? This Lockhart Loop, where's, this is out, is it out this way?
Yes, that's Route 707.
Right out here is Lockhart Flat, so...
Yes.
And why aren't you proposing to do any of that?
So that road is currently unpaved, and there is an existing VDOT road, so it is eligible to be added as a project.
Or is it unpaved? I'm not sure, I don't know where you're talking about.
This is Lockhart Loop. It's, I'm trying to think how to describe it.
Is that where Bobby First Stanley lived?
Mm-hmm.
Huh? Is that where Bobby First Stanley lived?
There's several homes that are served off of that road.
Well, there's three or four. One, two, three, four, maybe five.
Yeah, well, I drove up there today, there was at least probably seven or more residences that I counted through there, but I don't have exact number on that.
So you're planning on paving that road, which is good.
That's what we're proposing, is to add it as an unpaved road project, once again.
How do you get on this list here?
Huh?
How do you get on this list here?
That's, that's what we, we go through each year, and we make these suggestions to the board, or if the board has ones...
Well, I've got a road out, am I allowed to say roads that I'd like to see paved?
Yeah, I mean, we've gone through a couple of these that were suggested. Some of these are rural addition projects, which rural additions are, there is a funding mechanism for those in here, but those take a little bit of additional effort to go through to make sure they qualify and add them to the plan.
I'll have a road out, 731, Bass Ridge.
Mm-hmm.
You go almost to the end, you make a left, it's called McCarty Lane.
Okay.
There's quite a few people that live out there, and that's an unpaved road.
Okay. And that's not currently in the VDOT system?
No, I wouldn't think so, but that, that is a, they have quite a few people that live out there.
Okay.
And I would like for you to, if you can, to check on something. At the end of Bass Ridge, the road ends, but I have been told that it goes on for another, like, a tenth of a mile, and that's unpaved.
Okay.
I don't know why they stopped where they did, but I have been told, I think a VDOT man told, that that, that the right, you all have the right-of-way another tenth of a mile, and it's unpaved.
I can check into that, as far as if it is within, usually there'll be an end-of-state maintenance sign at the end of the road.
Well, they don't have a sign at it.
Yeah, and sometimes they don't, but I can check into that to see.
And I wish you'd check into McCarty Lane, because that has quite a few people that live out there.
Okay. Yeah, I've noted that. And once again, those are, any of those that are possible rural addition projects that you'd like to look at, kind of, my recommendation would be, get the board together as far as which, which, how do they want to prioritize it, which ones do we want to pursue? And I know there have been several. Part of it, though, is we, I'll be working with Lehman and the county as far as trying to come up with, like, what the, you know, what are the issues with each of those projects that, in order to have them proceed forward, so.
I need to add something here, Joey. When I mention Welcome Lane, I want to highlight, there's, there's 10 to 15 families up there, 20 to 30 people that are trafficking that road. And I know I brought this up a couple of times last term in the Coal Road Gas Committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And where do you guys come into prioritizing on some of this? Because you guys are the ones that manage the roads of the state, and I'm looking for you guys to factor in some of that, too.
Well, it is not currently in our system, so...
I understand that, but what I want, but you know, I, because I asked multiple times last term, how do we go about getting a road added to the state system? And I got no response. I finally got a response the last coal road gas, you were there, the first time. And so I am working it through there, but I'm just saying in general, I can tell you that we threw $5,000 of gravel money in each district this year. I bet more than half of that went on Welcome Lane. That's how bad that road is. It was getting to the point that citizens were saying, well, we're going to sue you guys when someone gets killed falling off the road. And I told them what I thought about that, but, because it's really a private road, but the reality is, the road is that bad, and every bit of that gravel, you know where it's at? Each time we put it on, the first or second rainstorm washes it into the creek. That, because you're putting gravel on top of hard rock, and I want you to understand that. I want you guys to be prioritizing things, too, and detailing for the board how bad things are, because, and I know that's not your road, but I'm just, I wouldn't have brought it up, except I can tell you that for every call I get, I get 10 calls for that road, because it's that bad. And that's it, and there's families that have to traffic that road every day, and I want to emphasize that. That's how important it is. Now, it's a complicated thing, because there's right-of-way issues. I talked to Lehman on this, so, but it is that important. We just, you know, I had, I'm not going to, it had nothing to do with the road, but we literally had to throw stuff at it this week, because we lost one of the folks at the top of the road in this last storm. And that was our battalion from the storm. And I pulled gravel away from, that was already lined up to go some places, so that we could at least get it there, because family and friends needed to be with them during this hard time. But I'm trying to, all I'm doing is trying to stress to you how bad that road is compared to all the other roads. I only mentioned Rocky Gap Hollow, because that is a state-owned road, and it's gravel. But, but the real priority is Welcome Lane. That, that is by far the worst one in my district.
Yeah, and that's the, as far as with VDOT, available assistance, if it's an eligible rural addition project, the county can apply for revenue sharing funds for those types of projects. There is an application cycle going on right now, they're accepting pre-applications for that. So if the county's interested in pursuing a revenue sharing project, then that is something that we can work on with, with Lehman and Larry, as far as trying to see if that's a viable project for the county to add. That if, for revenue sharing projects, if you do want to be competitive for funding, and I'll mention that, is, they do need to be in your comprehensive plan. That's one of the requirements for them to score well in that application process. But it's a 50, it's a dollar-for-dollar match. I think I went through some of that in the coal road...
The comprehensive plan, is that, Larry, is that done by the coal road, or are we talking about the one that the planning commission has?
The coal road one, Joey, or the...
I'm sorry.
The plan with coal road, or the one through Planning District?
Um, that would be with, the dollar-for-dollar match would, could be coal severance, it's any local funding source that can apply to it.
It would be, it would be helpful if you had a flow diagram, where we start, where we hope to end up, if we, you know, what steps we could take, because you're throwing out names here that I don't really, I'm having difficulty understanding how the process goes.
Right.
And we'd like, if you had a flow chart to show us how we could implement each plan, it would be helpful. Did you find out about paving the Pound River Road from the bridge to where you turn up Osber's Gap? I think I called you and asked you about that, and you said you'd get back with me.
Uh, Pound River Road.
From the bridge, Swindle Bridge, what's his name? I never can think of it.
Poodle Joe.
Poodle Joe Bridge. I don't think that's really the name of it, but it does have Poodle Joe on that.
Is that Route 631?
Yes.
Yes.
From there up to where you turn up Osber's Gap, the road right beside the river, Pound River.
Okay.
You paved from Osber's Gap on up to the Pound River Bridge.
Uh-huh.
So I'd like to see, you, from Poodle Joe Bridge, it's, you know, I had called and asked you, did you have a forecast when that might be paved?
That, that's something I can relate to Wade, that's on his side of the house with the...
I think I've asked him about it, but...
They, they manage the, coordinating with the district on the paving schedules, so that would be a question.
But it would be real helpful if you had a flow chart to show us, you know, the process.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And we just, with the process of safety, you know, we work closely with Lehman, yes, and we, you know...
Yeah, and that's, I know, we've talked, Larry and I've talked quite a bit here recently with different projects, and I know, you know, the Ag Center's been brought up. Those are all different ones that we're looking at, you know, possible funding sources. There's also Economic Development Access Program, which is a whole nother funding program that VDOT administers in working conjunction with VEDP. So those, those are all, you know, kind of somewhat outside of the scope of just what we're covering with the secondary six-year plan today, but that, I do encourage you just, if you do have questions about that, reach out to me, and I'll try to get you pointed in the right direction, answer any questions you have.
I saw you mowing, mowing on 83 today, which is good.
Yeah, we do have contract mowers working right now for, on our primaries.
And I really appreciate, it's not my district, but I did go visit it, the Skid Rock area, all the work that you guys have done, AEP and you, and Asplunk, and just everybody. I mean, it was, I went and visited last Thursday, and it was just, it was stunning. That's a word I like to use a lot, but it was shocking.
Yeah.
See the damage that was done, and I appreciate, watch all of it. I hope you continue to do more.
Joey, did Wade get with you on, the last time he was here, I mentioned doing a study, speed study on Lit Creek?
Joey, that's the speed study?
Because it goes from, it drops down to 45, I think, at one point, or 40, I can't remember now. And one of the individuals asked, why can't it just continue that way all the way around? Because it stops right after Dog Branch, a little ways past that, it stops.
Okay.
That cuts down. He was, he's concerned, because there's children being picked up by buses along there and stuff, and they get going after they get past that 45 area.
Okay.
This is more in your area.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So I, it's not really in my area, but he, for some reason, called me and he mentioned that, and I, it's, you can see, like, for some reason, you guys recognize the speed limit there, but then it, after that, it stops. I'm a concern with the other families and that.
Okay.
And I know it's not what you're here for, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
When we got you in the audience.
We got you, we're going to hold you. Do you have any, anything else to bring to our attention on that six-year plan, or any other comments or anything?
No, I think that pretty well covers it. As I'd said, the, the only project that we're showing adding, and that's in the funding years '28 and '29, is that Lockyer, Lockhart Loop project. And as I said, if the board decided to reprioritize these couple of projects, or look at additional ones later, it would be something that can be, be done.
That would be added in what year? Twenty-nine you got down there?
Yes, '28 and '29. And that's what, it's, each year, there's a certain amount of funding that is available, and we add the projects in based on the estimates that we have for it.
Do we have any phone calls? No phone calls?
Madam Sheriff, I'd like, I'd like to make a comment, if that's okay.
Okay.
I just want to say, I'm actually a Blowing Rock resident. I live in Blowing Rock on Route Six, or on Blowing Rock Road, I guess it used to be Route 611. I grew up in that area. So I just would like to say, on behalf of, you know, the residents of that area, I'm going to cry, sorry. It's unreal, the devastation that our community experienced, but just to say thank you...
Yeah, sorry.
Sincerely, from the residents, to VDOT, to the power company, and all the folks who came in, to our local leaders who were out, you know, until 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning, just trying to get us a path, you know, to be able to get to town. It was a tremendous effort, and there's still a lot of cleanup and a lot of things that we know that that's going to have to come, but we'll be patient, and we're just thankful to have power. And everyone was safe, and, you know, no one in my family, fortunately, no one lost a home, but there were a lot of, you know, property damages and all that, but truly, thank you. Everyone has been very kind and very helpful, so, you know, we sincerely mean that. So thank you very much.
Yes, I'll, I'll definitely pass on the...
Yeah, it's, you know, to see your home and your community, and like Rhonda said, if you don't drive down there and see it, it's really kind of truly hard to understand the amount of devastation. And when we say hundreds of trees were down, literally, it was hundreds of trees. And areas, you know, that I'm driving, even this morning, that used to be filled with trees, I'm seeing daylight in places that I've never seen before, you know? So that just really shows the amount of devastation. But thank you for you and your team. Everyone's communication has been wonderful, and people were stopping by the house just to give updates on, you know, when we could expect this and all that. So I think that it was a great effort made by everyone, and we're extremely appreciative of that, so.
I will definitely pass that along.
Please, please pass it on, yes.
They, I was actually out on vacation during, so I didn't, I wasn't a participant in all the excitement, but...
Well, I'll say, I was on vacation, too.
Yeah.
I experienced the power outage, but my family sure did, and, you know, I see it now.
Yeah, but I think Wade and Allen and all, you know, Fremont, the whole, everybody did a great job trying to pull it together and get roads open.
I asked your question, that helicopter that came, I saw the picture of the helicopter that had like a chainsaw on the end, is that what it is?
Um...
Supposed to cutting trees, it has multiple...
Is that the paracoma that they had?
Yeah.
Aspen and...
You know, it would be really wonderful, as I was coming over here from 83, or what I call, from the 83 guys in grocery, the trees are like this. And I think that caused, I noticed as I went through Skid Rock and Blowing Rock, and I'm through Camp Creek, over to the, came out at the parapin, a lot of the trees, there were trees everywhere, but a lot of the trees were next to the houses and next to the road.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm telling you, somebody, there are going to be some more people killed... And I'm telling you, somebody, there're gonna be some more people killed if, if these trees are not removed from your rideaway. And you could log your rideaway, it makes, I mean, really, I don't know how much logging's making right now, but just like when I came tonight, the trees are overhanging like this next to the road. It's like one good ton. And I've complained about this before.
Yeah.
And I called, I called to, but, you know, it's like, it would be wonderful if we had that helicopter that would just go through and shear these trees off, the branches off your rideaway or something, because this is not gonna be, unfortunately, we did have two fatalities. It's not gonna be our last fatality because you're not clearing the trees out for your rideaway and they're, they're just, we're gonna get some more storms, I'm sure. And I'm really, it's scary sometimes. And I'm scared for people and I'm scared myself to be out there.
And I know the residency, we've, we've worked a lot with the district in trying to prioritize a lot of the routes like that.
Yes, I know you're hindered by Richmond, gives you money and they don't really want, probably they don't care or, you know, no more interested in eight lanes going every which way and.
We, we.
We're down here going through a forest.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we, we try to, try to do the best we can with, with the budgets we do have.
Well, I'll just tell you, my husband got out there before yesterday and he took a weed eater and cleaned off the turn to where I live on Candy Ridge, out Bice Ridge, because it was dangerous to pull out from Bice Ridge onto Candy Ridge. And he spent probably two hours with the weed eater himself clearing off the rideaway.
Yeah.
And you, your VDOT building is right across the road, your new VDOT building. Why haven't y'all moved into that building?
They are working on getting moved in.
What's the whole of, I mean, it looks finished to me.
I don't, I don't want to really interrupt or anything, but we are running about 15, 16 minutes over into our regular monthly meeting. Are there anybody else in the audience that has a public comment to our six-year plan? Okay.
Mine for the maintenance, frying pan, 625 and 600.
Uh huh.
It's actually getting to be a dangerous rubber drop. The edges of road.
Oh, that's not perfect.
Water is washed out. Again, with 625 and 600 starts, there's a gip in the road. And I've done broke two shocks on a vehicle through that gip, it was road sing and I guess it was rain. We don't have no drains, like you're right on. Every drain might have got stopped up. This last storm, we actually had one house that got flooded and got over two inches of water inside of our house because of the stopped up drain. And the other thing is low margins on the Wilder side of 600 from the Dickinson County line up. Been told that it's in the budget, this was two years ago.
Okay.
Problem is, you come out of Wilder when it's foggy and you've got nothing to see where you're going.
What route is that?
It's about 600.
About 600, okay.
It's from the top of Kerry Mountain Down, I think they call it East Eagle Mountain Down.
Okay.
I've had to actually go up and lead a labor of mine down a couple of times because she can't see whether she's on the road or getting like a little bit.
Okay.
And the places on frying pan coming down were the ditch, the back was washed out and under the road and the road broke off. And here, a little while back, which the rains caused some raw havoc with everybody on, about all of us. But I've got two drains out in Flint and maybe, and there was a car hyperflamed and how they kept it going over the creek, I don't know. But it's almost like walking a river and you're walking a river.
Okay.
But I think it's been over, it's been almost over six years since there's been any that down on frying pan, any out of rain whatsoever.
Do you have any active work orders in our system?
There's both the two work orders.
Okay, and what was your name again?
The condos and one for the drains.
Okay, what was your name again?
Kenneth Rose.
Your name?
Kenneth Rose.
Kenneth, okay. All right, I'll, I'll relay that to our maintenance operations manager.
I'm surprised the school, school outside hasn't complained about that one ditch because you've got to get the middle road. It's kind of in a blind, so you've got to get the middle, but you're telling me it's worse on the chin.
Okay.
Okay.
I made a note of it.
Kenneth, I thank you for coming from frying pan over tonight. I appreciate that. And I, I turned in that lady that, I didn't turn it into VDOT, I didn't go ahead and get online and report that today, but I did report it to the county to try to get her some gravel over there, you know, this afternoon.
That's a problem with that Hoover dam.
Yeah.
That you both, that four million dollars.
Yeah.
I've been in touch with them. My concern is, back in 60, it'd be an operation they maintain, there's a gate on the front of that, where that water comes out of mountain. They used to maintain that gate where that Hoover dam has got it blocked up and was doing, doing thousands of gallons of water back in that mountain. If that was to ever bust, my concern is, it could bust out of that mountain someplace else.
Yeah, okay.
And, I mean, if it does bust, it's going to cause a lot of problems and some major problems on all of frying pan.
Okay, all right.
Now, see, I have to take one Hoover dam out back at last water, because it was actually up in the road, driving through late.
Okay, all right. Well, we appreciate you coming, we appreciate everybody that's made a comment, we appreciate you, Mr. Mullins, for this, and we will, I guess we about need to move on with our regular meeting. If, if nobody else has anything to say, if the board.
Joey, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joey.
All right.
And at, and at this time, I need a motion and second to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a move and second to close public hearing. If no other comments, I'll in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. We have now ended our public hearing. Still no phone call or anything? Okay. It is now 6:21 and I will call our regular meeting to order and announce that four of our board, Mrs. Willis, Mrs. Sluss, myself, Ms. Kaiser, Mr. Peters is all present. Josh is absent for the time being, hoping to arrive 7 o'clock or thereabout.
He's at an event with his daughter at the.
Yes, he's at a, yes, at a beta induction at the elementary school with his daughter. Our clerk, Teresa Lyle, our county administrator, Mr. Barton, our county attorney, Mr. Sturgill, and our economic development director, Ms. Cronkot, is all present. And I'm missing my grandson being inducted into that, but I sent Papal in my place, so. But we will now ask Mr. Barton if he will lead us in prayer.
Sure, let's bow our heads. Miss Conant, gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you once again tonight, Lord, and Lord, we pray that your blessing would be over our county, Lord. We just pray that your blessing would be over our meeting, Lord, that you would just give our leaders wisdom, Lord, and direction, Lord, as they lead the county, Lord. And dear Lord, just be with the residents of our county, Lord, those that are suffering from the damages from the storm, Lord, we just pray that you be with them as they clean things up, Lord, and kind of get the repairs made, Lord. And Lord, especially be with the families of those that have lost loved ones during the storm, Lord, we just pray the special blessing upon them, Lord, Lord, whatever it's all, we pray. Amen.
And Mr. Peters, will you lead in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, the second item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. And in our packet, we have minutes from our budget workshop on March the 9th and our regular meeting on April the 25th. Are there any corrections, statements or anything about any of these?
Were you, was Teresa able to look at that?
She was out yesterday and I mentioned to her this morning, I don't think she's had, I'm trying to get to go back.
I did, I did have one thing, because I think in, I wanted, when I read through the minutes, there was one, I know when we had a discussion with Mr. Beck, part of what I heard was that we pay a rent, they pay rent to use the building in Quinwood, but I don't see that we are collecting rent on the other two locations. So I, I thought that was important because that's something that we should probably look into in the future. You know, why would one be different than like the community center out of Quenchco? And I forget where the other location is.
You quit three and a half in Quenchco.
But that's the only thing I, I think that we should take note of that and that should be followed up because there, I don't understand the difference there.
The ones that count in building, the ones that, town, town, Quinwood, don't they?
Yeah, and they get.
They get 600, I believe, $650 or something like that, three of that.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is, I would expect.
Quenchco, we don't charge them anything, right?
No, and that's what I'm getting at.
We don't, but I think at the same time, I think Mr. Beck mentioned to us that, you know, they do allow other groups to use that.
Yeah, they do.
Facilities and they cover all the costs, utilities and things, so.
So it's used for multiple things, but I would still think there would be something there. But that's the only thing, but that wasn't in the minutes, that's all. The other part to follow up on that would be something that we'd have to do later.
Right.
That's not part of the minutes, that's the only thing.
Any other comment? If not, or here and none, I will need a motion and second to approve our minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
Have a move and second to approve our minutes of the budget workshop of the 9th and our regular meeting April 25th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And I noticed we have an agenda addendum that we are adding, we need to add item 8G.
Yeah, it gives some additional information. It's already on there and we're adding.
That's just additional information, okay.
Other business, 9A, B, and C, the project management plan, the grant for the PSA and the ARPA tourism grant.
Okay.
And the resolution for designated community improvement projects, so.
Okay. And we also, it's been asked that we move item number five, the attendance recognition, down a little bit.
The reference.
Yeah, down after item number 10, so I guess it needs to be moved to 10C, right?
Yes, I think that would work, so.
All right. So we're moving five.
10A was.
We put it under maybe nine, nine D.
Nine D?
Nine D would be fine, okay.
Okay.
All right.
The agenda.
Madam Chair, also, the, we have the ARPA tourism grant on 9B, that kind of overlaps us what we have on the top of the agenda, the ARPA tourism grant on item 8. A, one, two, so we may just cover those all together, all three of those together, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, do I hear a motion on the, on our agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the additions and the movement of number five.
Okay, and a second?
If no one else has anything to add to the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a move and second on the floor to approve the agenda with some additions and moving one item down a little bit further into the program, waiting on Mr. Evans to get here. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Number four, the consent agenda. We have the approval of the expenditures, the county administrators' report, drug court community work program report, fire rescue report, animal control report, litter control report, and building department report. Those are all part of the consent agenda that we all should have read and studied. Do we have comments, corrections?
No questions, I make a motion, we approve all of them.
Second.
Okay. We have a move and second on the floor to approve the list of the consent items in the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well.
I would like to say, I was amazed that they picked up 400 bags of garbage.
They're doing a great job.
In a mall, was it a mall in the high, down Lake Road? That was a lot of work.
Okay, moving on to item number six, which is our public comment, which is really item five, I guess. Public comment, if anyone has a public comment, the lines are open, that you may call in at 276-333-0357. Or if anyone in the audience has a public comment, they are welcome to speak. You have three minutes to speak and you need to state your name and address. Okay, since we're sort of, we're probably not too far behind, but if no one has any comment, if no phone calls have yet come through, then do we need a motion to close public comment then?
You can just close.
Then I will close public comment. We will move on to item number seven, which is O Business, which is the Bear Pen Pool Lease. You got any, you want to?
Madam Chair, I'll update on this. This is the same lease that we entered into with Behavioral Health last year. Behavioral Health has agreed to operate the pool for us again this year. They've already been working on hiring their staff and they've had folks down there working since last week, kind of getting things cleaned up and ready to go. We have water going in the pool right now and we lack probably around three feet of water in getting it full. The PSA has been wonderful to work with. Ron, Mr. Phillips is out right now, but Crystal's been working with me during the times that they're pumping from the 611 pumping station or letting us run at a higher rate of flow than we normally do in there, so we're trying to get it filled and water treated as quickly as we can so we can get it open. Our original goal was the Memorial Day weekend, but with the testing we had done, I sent the report out, you know, it came back, everything was, was safe with the pool, which was good news, so we are able to proceed with the lease with Behavioral Health since they are well known to operate it for us.
Okay.
So when do they plan to open? You have any plan? You're not gonna have it open by, pretty likely.
No, we're probably not gonna make it by the weekend, because we're still trying to get the water in the pool and get the water, you know, the initial water chemistry balanced on the, on the pools, we're probably gonna be, you know, sometime next week, best case scenario. We're trying to get it filled and trying to get there as quickly as we can. They're ready to go, they'll be ready by the weekend, Behavioral Health will, we'll just be running behind trying to get the water in it and the water treated, so.
Weren't there a little bit of holdup with the water with the power outages?
There was, we, we started with the water, you know, the shortage of water and stuff, we, we couldn't put any water in until we got all that resolved and everything back online, all the tanks.
From last week, yeah, yeah.
Do you need a motion to approve the lease?
The lease, please.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the lease with Behavioral Health for the Bear Pen Swimming Pool.
Second?
I'll second it.
We have a move and second on the, on the floor to approve the Bear Pen Pool Lease with Dickinson County Behavioral Health. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? I forgot to ask that a while ago, but I thought everybody said yes anyway, so. Okay, moving on to number eight, we have several things and under number eight, which is new business. And the first one is the ARPA Tourism Grant, which is one of the things of our addendum items.
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Sturgill had informed us previously, the tourism grant and item number 9B, which we went and take up while we're doing the 8A. We put some items in here, the, some of the detail that we were gonna do, but in reality, we should have just approved the grant itself, which you have before you here. And what this is, or Ms. Cronkot, would you like to share?
Sure, I'd love to. In 2021, the previous administration, Governor Northroom and the Virginia Assembly allocated $50 million of ARPA funds to Virginia Tourism that were then to be allocated. that were then to be allocated to each of the localities within the state to assist in revitalization of the tourism industry. Um, as you'll see in the packet on page, it would start on page 19 in Appendix A. You can see each locality in the state and the allocation that was designated. And it was based upon, I think 30,000 was the lowest amount at any locality, but it was based upon population and a lot of different factors. But for this particular grant, Dickinson County was allocated $30,000. This fund, although designated for tourism, does need to come through the Board of Supervisors to be able to manage those funds. Um, and Mr. Barton and I thought this would be a great opportunity for economic development and the tourism in the county to partner on a project. So that's, that's what we have done thus far, um, in working up the breakdown of how to spend those funds. For more than one year now, the Tourism Committee of their strategic plan, the top priority of their plan is to have a separate website dedicated to tourism in the county. All of our surrounding, um, the counties, most of them do have a dedicated site that is for tourism. So just in, um, being prudent of time, we went ahead and purchased the domain, visitdickinsoncounty.com. So we have that available to us and part of the, this grant would be utilized by a group to do the website design, but also to implement a visit widget, which is in line with our regional tourism partners on the heart of Appalachia, as well as several of the neighboring localities have this visit widget application on their tourism website. So the, this funding would be utilized to create the website, update our content by way of still photography, other types of media, as well as, once we get that to a point that we're able to release that to the public, we want to be able to have a marketing campaign of advertising Visit Dickinson County. So those are some other things that are included in this breakdown of this $30,000. Um, as Larry mentioned, you know, initially, we were going to bring all of the individual things, but after talking with Mr. Sturgill, we realized, you know, for the sake of time for the project, as well as we have some pretty stringent deadlines to meet with utilizing these funds, um, that if the board would consider approving the grant, then it would allow us to be able to move forward. I also would like to point out that we do have the Virginia Tourism procurement guidelines and we will be following those guidelines throughout this process. Um, and if there is a need to, you know, to do that, we will absolutely be doing that, so.
They gonna cost you $30,000?
What now?
What you're proposing, is that gonna cost $30,000?
The, the breakdown is in the packet, there's a spreadsheet. But the bulk of that is going to actually be promotional content. Um, and, and what our hope is, is to be able to engage with someone that can do that throughout the year so that we have different seasons captured. But the, the total project would be $30,000. And this is representative to what, um, some of the other counties are doing very similar projects in the state with, with their funding. Everybody's kind of competing with one another, right, for, for tourism and tourist-related things? And I think especially here in Dickinson County, with the breaks and a lot of the other assets that we have, it will be a tremendous asset for us.
Chris, do you have anything to add as far as the process?
Um, I, I just believe that a motion to approve the terms and conditions and plan for the tourism grant as presented-
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a move in second on the floor to approve the tourism grant as has been explained tonight and is in approval with our attorney. Any other comment? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, no one opposes, moving on. Now we just move on to B, right? We don't need to do the Form A and-
Correct, yes ma'am.
Okay, because of the, okay. Down to number B is the contract of audit.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, before you, in item eight B, you have a contract modification agreement. And this is with Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates, who's, uh, in charge of the county audits required by the state each year. The original contract was dated back March 25th, 2016, and, uh, had a provision there to extend it for subsequent years. And, uh, we have a good relationship with them, we work good with them. Uh, and actually, RFC does pretty well all the state audits, uh, on this end of the state. The, for the county school board, everything combined together for 2023, the quote is $60,000. That's up about $2,500 from the past year, um, is what that is. So we're just asking for approval of that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve the contract modification.
Okay.
Second.
Move in second on the floor to approve the, uh, Robinson Farmer Cox Associate Audit and Services Agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, anyone oppose? Okay, number C.
Abbott's report?
Yeah, okay.
Again, Madam Chair, members of the board, before you, in your packet, you have a proposal from Davenport Public Finance. Uh, most of y'all know, and have met at the meetings, you know, Mr. Rose, David Rose has come out and met with us. Uh, you know, David and Roland have always been good to help us here at the county. They helped us with investment of some of the QSCAB funding. It's one of the more recent projects, as well as they helped us with the refinance on the Judicial Center, uh, some other financing in the past as well. And with interest rates taking the turn that they have recently, uh, working with them in order to try to earn some additional interest on some county funding that we have. Uh, of course, uh, this is a project we're just hoping to start, um, soon because times of this is quicker, we can make some moves, the quicker that we can begin earning more interest on it. And, uh, it's an hourly rate contract, not to exceed $50,000. And I will say, in the first year of this, you know, based on proposals and the things that I'm seeing right now, uh, the amount of money we can earn, I mean, it's gonna far exceed, you know, the, exponentially the costs that would be occurring, so. I'll try to answer any questions that you have on it, or if not, we'd ask for a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve the Davenport.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, move in second to approve the agreement with, um, Davenport on public finance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Uh, moving on to number D, the Health Department Resolution. Or Health Department Resolution's the next thing.
Request.
Sorry about that.
That's right, Madam Chair, eight D, the Health Department request here. We have, uh, Department of General Services come up to Virginia and it's sent a, a letter to us here last week. And as landlord for the Health Department, the lease states that any improvements or changes made by the tenant have to require approval. And so what they're looking to do is they have some funding, on their own funding, they want to install some cameras, an alarm system, and some extra door modifications and upgrades, which is basically, you know, some keyless entry systems and some things like that. And, uh, Chris, could you go to question?
Well, I don't have any concerns, they've been very good at keeping up that building and stuff. Just, um, do we have an obligation, don't we lease that building, do we have to coordinate?
Uh, no, with this, we lease it to them, to the Health Department.
Oh, okay, I thought that we also leased that from someone, we owned the building.
No, we owned that building, so.
We owned the building.
They pay us rent.
Yeah, they pay us rent and things, and so, you know, it's not a modification.
I make a motion, we approve it.
And they have the funds for the repairs?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Second, anybody?
I'll second it.
Move in second on the floor to approve the Health Department's request to do some modifications to our building. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, anyone oppose? Okay, moving on to E, a resolution.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, if you'll recall, it's probably been maybe a year and a half ago, uh, we adopted, along with other localities in the Lonesome Pond Riffa, the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, uh, an effort in order to try to attract data centers to southwest Virginia and within our region. We established some tax rates for the data centers and they were uniform within our Lonesome Pond Riffa. And so what they're asking now, uh, is each county to adopt a resolution. This is the same resolution that the other counties in the city of Norton have been adopting. And basically, it's just, you know, if you'll see, when you've got your warehouses and it says, "Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Dickinson County does enthusiastically support the establishment of data centers in our area and welcomes companies that seek to invest in our community." You know, we're just trying to do something to try to attract these data centers, uh, because we've already set our tax rates and things. And part of the announcement yesterday, um, which is another topic, but with the, um, the SMRs, the announcement in, uh, Duffield, uh, you know, once that comes to fruition in our area with the additional capacities on power and things, they're hoping to partner with a data center and kind of come in together because they can provide the, the needed power supply. Their, their power hogs, data centers are, they don't employ a lot of people, but they do pay pretty good taxes even at the reduced rates, uh, with their equipment, things that they have. So basically, we're just asking for a resolution that we support and welcome data centers in our county, so.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a move in second on the floor to approve the resolution to accept data centers into our region. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, no opposes. Number, the second one for the resolution is a six-year form our public hearing on our six-year plan. And we all heard that, no one-
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the secondary plan that was presented tonight.
Okay, a second? Can I second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead, Ron, I'll go ahead.
Well, I'll second it, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a move in second on the floor to approve a, a secondary six-year plan as presented by, uh, tonight by Mr. Mullins from VDOT. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, anyone oppose? Moving on down to our, uh, item F, our VACO insurance renewal. Mr. Barton?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. This, our next item that you have before you is our VACORE renewal. And of course, they provide, um, insurance for all the county's vehicles, uh, our properties, our crime, our cyber risk, liability, all the above. And, uh, if you remember in our budget discussions, initially I had a higher increase. Overall, we're seeing about eleven and a half percent increase with our VACORE. I anticipated, I anticipated that to be just a little bit higher than what it was in the budget. Of course, near the end, when I got the actual numbers in, we was able to save a little money in the budget, pull it back, but this would be, uh, just asking to approve these, you know, based on the, um, the renewal premiums that, that came in, I guess, the, um, the plan is here, I copied the total plan. Uh, the total was our work comp and everything as well, I missed at a moment, it was $220,284. That's for all county vehicles, uh, buildings, uh, liability, crime, cyber risk, workers' compensation, et cetera. And almost half of that is workers' compensation, a little less than half. And then it also has our line of duty coverage in there for Sheriff's Office, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the insurance renewal for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a move in second on the floor to approve our 2324 VACO insurance renewal. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Moving on to, um, G, the, uh, community flood preparedness. Is that you or Mr. Rakes?
What kind of, Mr. Rakes, if you could come to the podium here and then Mr. Sturgill will let him share some as well. But kind of start us off, this is the grant that Mr. Rakes applied for to-
That's that number eight.
It is, and thank you for clarifying. In the addendum, we have, uh, some information in eight G, here's the first item in the top. It's in the packet, but then some updated information. Mr. Rakes applied for this grant, this flood proofing grant, to help some of the places in Hayside and surrounding areas that, uh, did not qualify for participation in the Core 202 project. And in his application, he done an excellent job in doing this, so he kind of mimicked the Core program and how it works. And, uh, Ron, do you have something to add?
Well, I wanted to clarify, Hayside or Sandlick, because I think it's more specific than that, maybe I'm wrong.
It starts at the, uh, the outside of the Hayside corporate limits, goes to Russell Fort River Road and a quarter mile of Creek Creek.
And that, that just, you know, I didn't want people to get like big eyes and that. I wanted to make sure, because I knew it was more specific than that, that, sorry.
It's all right, and so, um, of course, you've already approved the grant paperwork itself. You know, we signed that, you know, every how many months ago and things got, things got the process started. Mr. Rakes has done an excellent job in getting started, we went through our procurement. You know, we have our surveyor, our appraisal, everything, the board approved those. And now it's getting down to the, to the fact as far as the roles and responsibility of the advisory board and how the process is going to work. So we had some information in your packet and in eight G, and then Mr. Sturgill had sent some updates in the addendum here. So I guess, Chris, before we get started, remember, Mr. Sturgill could update us on what he's-
Yeah, and Mr. Rakes has done an excellent job on, on everything with this grant. He had prepared a, uh, kind of an outline as far as for the roles and responsibilities of the advisory board. Um, and I just went through and, and made some comments as far as whether you all want to adopt the changes or not, that, that's completely up to you. But basically, I, I was just a little bit more specific, um, for instance, on number one, that it's in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grant. Specified, again, that it's to be in accordance with all established criteria for the grant award. And I guess, one of the biggest issues that, that I want to bring in front of the board is whether the advisory board is the ultimate authority and then Larry signs off on it, or whether the, the advisory board makes recommendations and then it's brought before the Board of Supervisors for, for ultimate approval. And so that's really in item one B, um, that, that you're looking at there as far as whether, uh, the grant applications after approval of the CFPF Advisory Board are then forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for approval, or whether that needs to be struck and the advisory board, then, uh, Larry's granted the authority to sign off from there.
Your advisory board, you've got that in here, right?
Yeah, we'll be doing the appointments on that, and that would be, uh, of course, the building official, the county administrator, uh, the supervisor in that district, which would be you and then two community members that are in the community but are not participating in the grant.
The other reason I brought this up is I knew it was only Sandlick in there, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
I, Mr. Rakes, if you might comment on the, the grant itself, what, what is-
In the grant, the way, it's, it's kind of a new grant, set up through DCR. The county administrator or the person serving for the jurisdiction and the locality's certified flood planning manager, which would be me. And all the other grant applications, those two people make all the decisions. And me and Larry thought that that wasn't quite transparent enough, wasn't open enough. So we wanted to mimic the Trammell Grant as far as the board. That board also hears complaints. And it takes a hour or so for the meeting, which would extend your office meeting quite a bit. And, but basically, it boils down to Larry makes the final decision. I make recommendations, Larry signs on the dotted line. If he don't approve it, it don't, it don't get done.
But the board-
So you're saying after this board reviews it?
This, that's-
You got five people listed here.
That's, that's the reason they're an advisory board, they'll-
Okay.
They, they would vote as, as their recommendation, as their advice on this. It'd still be left up to Larry, uh, to make the decision. I mean, they may want to spend more money than what should be legally spent. And Larry could say, well, we can't really do that and we need to do it-
So it's gonna basically make it happen?
Per the grant and per the, uh, you know, per the agreement with the-
How do you feel about it, Larry?
Well, um, as far as with the grant, uh, you know, as far as when it comes down to the dollars and things, that's all from an independent appraiser, uh, is where that's coming from, so. We're using the independent appraiser that gives the dollar amount and the independent surveyor that does the survey and actually the elevation certificate and things, so. It wouldn't be that I would be saying this is what we're paying or anything, right, Chris? I mean, that's what.
Right, you would have, you'd have documentation backing up everything.
Yeah, and everything's going to be based on whether it was in the flood or would have been in the flood.
We will be in the flood.
Well, you would have, it'd have to meet the 202 criteria.
That's what I'm getting at.
But not eligible for the 202 money.
Yeah, I understand that.
Which is outlined in the grant agreement.
So it's not, I think we're relatively safe with this one.
Who, who picks the appraiser? I mean, who, who's the?
We did an RFP, and.
And who was it?
We voted on that last month or month before last, didn't we?
Yeah, month before last.
Northern appraisal.
Oh, that was out of, yeah. So, if they appraise it, then Larry has to, he don't have to, but he, he takes that into consideration that he's.
Yeah, yeah. We, we also got moving expenses and stuff, and we would discuss that with the advisory board.
How many do you foresee partaking in this, Chris? How many, how many houses or people do you see partaking in this?
We will probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of nine structures, give or take. Now, they are a couple that will be coming before the, this board to ask for, to enact the ordinance that we have on Durlich Buildings, because we have a couple of structures that the family wants tore down. It's our shit property, but the ours is scattered to and fro, and we could, you know, they've been abandoned for years, they're an eyesore.
You can take it to court.
And we can simply take this, we can take this, because they're vacant, CORE won't touch them. That's another, that's another thing. CORE, they won't touch a vacant home. So, we can take this money and clean up that eyesore, and, and remove that structure, because those are the structures that's going to be the first thing washed down the river when a flood comes.
Would you have to take it to court? Mr. Sturgill could get it removed. I mean, you'd have to notify.
Yes.
In the paper that you're going to do it, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
Are these structures in the floodplain?
Oh, yeah. We.
So, I guess that brings the question if there, is there anything tied to this that goes back and says how or what can be built on these properties?
When, when we, when we do a buyout, the county will own that property in perpetuity. By definition, that's ninety years. It means forever, but it's actually ninety years.
Ninety.
But, the floodplain elevation's like thirteen feet off the ground. So, in theory, it's not buildable property anyway.
And that's what I thought. And so, it's basically going to fall back to the county.
Yep.
And, I, it just raised the question because there, you know, if, if the flood control, if the flood 202 plan went into effect right after that flood, we know there's been a lot more buildings and houses involved, because the ones that got destroyed, they just, they got destroyed in that. Forty years later, with the flood 202 kicked in, and these are ones that, what, they did, you're right, they don't touch anything that's vacant. If it's a Darwish building that's left over from the flood, they're not going to touch it. So, I, it's up to you guys. My.
How far does it go up prior, I mean, not prior, but from, up toward council? How far does it go up that eighty, eighty?
It goes up to Russell Fork River Road intersection.
Yeah.
Is that up there where the bridge is?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I can't perceive, there's not a lot of houses. Well, that wouldn't need to flood like Rocklick or nothing like that, would it?
No, it's.
Because they didn't flood it in there. Did they flood it?
No, but you got several houses there right at Russell Fork.
Right at the, the place.
You've got several houses that are in the floodplain that didn't qualify for the 202 program, because the, at that particular area, the 20277 flood is two foot higher than the floodplain. It gets, it gets complicated than that. But you've got houses that could be flooded that doesn't qualify for the CORE, because they're, I just don't. And we've got some that we can do some minor floodproofing for. We've got, I talked to one gentleman about raising his home. It would need to be raised probably three feet, and, so.
How do they, what do they, they put, how do they do that?
They're doing one in Hayside right now.
Where?
Mayor Norman's old house.
Is that over in the flat, flats over in back?
You okay?
Are they putting cribs on underneath or is it?
They got, they got four cribs, steel beams, and got the house lifted up. I walked under it today.
So, Chris, you just need, or Mr. Barton, I guess, you need a motion for us to approve this, and also approve that you have the final say after the advisory board looks at it.
Well, we have two, two options, you know. We have the way, that's the way it's written up with Chris's original, and then Mr. Sturgill had added the 1B in here that would be bringing it to the Board of Supervisors for approval, and it's really whatever the pleasure of the board is.
You guys want to be involved in it, basically.
I don't want to sit here, air and listen to it.
It, it'd get lengthy, yeah. It'd get lengthy.
I trust Larry.
I trust Larry, and, and I trust him to.
He knows something more about building than I do. You and him know what more building I do.
Well, the values would all be based on the independent appraisal.
The appraisal, yeah.
We wouldn't be setting values or anything. And it has to meet the criteria with the elevation.
I don't think there's much room for error.
There's, it said there's not much. Neither qualifies or it doesn't. And then the criteria establishing the grant is the independent appraisal setting the values, so.
So we need to vote to take B out, right?
Don't.
To adopt the changes that I made except for to take B out, which was the big issue.
Was there another issue you had? Because I know that was your second one.
No, basically, the rest of it was flushed out as far as, you know, what the criteria, that it had to be presented with the criteria and terms and conditions of the grant, which is kind of a given anyway. 2B, you know, it had it added in there, county administrator's not granting such authority, but you all, as part of your motion, can bring in that authority. So, it's really just the removal of 1B, and then permitting Larry, Larry to have the authority to sign contracts, these are other necessary legal documents.
So, I make a motion, we approve it with the, in accordance with grant award.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a moving second on the floor to approve the.
You're making a motion to remove that 1B, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Is that all for you?
It is.
Chris.
We'll have the appointments coming in next.
Yeah, the next will follow is number H, the appointments. The first appointment, do we vote on this board here to appoint them and under this, or was? Okay.
No, it'd be H1, it'll be the, yes.
Yeah. Our first board appointment is the CFPF Advisory Board Recommendations, and that is the county administrator, Mr. Barton, Sandlick Supervisor, Mr. Peters, building official, Mr. Rakes, Sandlick residents, two residents that is not part of the program, which is Scott Anderson and Brett Sykes, moving second to appoint them as the advisory board.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And I will second that. We have a moving second on the floor to approve these five people as the CFPF Advisory Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well.
Put me down, Teresa, abstaining, because I, I'm not going for myself.
Right, okay. Our second one is the Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizen Appointment, and the terms are currently, I mean, the appointment is currently Marshall Hughes and Michael Ratliff, and they, do we have anybody else's names to?
I make a motion that we reappoint these two, because I know they do a good job.
I asked Marshall Sunday, and he said he, he would like to be reappointed. I don't know about Michael Ratliff. I've never seen him at a meeting. Is he, who is, is Michael Ratliff?
He's married to Lucille.
Lucille.
He lives out on Seventy Two.
Up on the hill, though, on the right.
Mm-hmm. He's out on, forgot his name.
Does he go to the meetings? I've never seen him at the meetings.
Well, I figured he attended, because, is he not attending?
Well, the meetings I've been to, I've not seen him. Maybe I've not been to any meetings, but I've not seen him, but.
So do you go to them?
No, I, I stepped off so that Marshall could take my place. I don't, I haven't been to them in a year or two.
I think Michael was just appointed the last year, wasn't he?
He did an ear appointment, I think.
Why not point Marshall and his wife both? Because she always goes with you.
You can't have two on the board.
Francis always goes with you.
I made a motion that we appoint Marshall and Michael Ratliff.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to reappoint Marshall Hughes and Michael Ratliff to the Appalachian Agency Senior Citizen Board. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on to item number three, the Building Code Appeals Board to replace Rocky Wood from his untimely death back in February. And is that not, is that your Sandlick appointment on that?
I don't know that these.
They're not, they're not.
They're not district.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And he's the one I knew from my area, so I don't, if you guys got some suggestions, by all means.
We've got about every contractor. The Rymys is the only contractors I've seen.
The Rymys aren't on here, so.
Huh?
Yeah.
If Nathan.
Yeah, that would be one.
What's his first name?
Nathan.
I haven't talked to him, but do you think he'd be willing to serve on it?
I think Chris had reached out to him at one time, but I don't recall. Chris has already stepped out.
Do you want to table it for now, and, and you can check with him?
Uh, sure.
I mean, what do you, what's the board think? I'm asking you guys.
I think he's been the only contractor left we ain't got, we don't have on here.
I, I'm not opposed to it, but I.
No, I'm not opposed to it either. I think.
I would think that we need to table it until we contact him.
Yeah.
We can, we can do that.
Maybe Chris knows he would accept it.
I would make a motion that we table that appointment.
Second.
I'll second it.
Moving second to table the appointment to the boarding, Board of Building Code Appeal. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. And moving on, number four, Cumberland Plateau Planning District, the Citizens Board Appointment. I had been contacted by Sandy Mullins here about a month or so back, that she does not want to be reappointed. So we have Lester Mullins, Lester Hill, Jeff Newberry, and then we need one other one. If we're going to reappoint, the pleasure of the board to either reappoint them three, or.
Do you have to have four, or do you have to?
I make a motion that we reappoint Richard, Lester, and Jeff Newberry.
You don't have to have four?
You do have to have four.
We do.
Yeah, we'll have to.
We guys come back next month with it for, if need be, if you don't have a name.
Richard, that's Rick Mullins, right?
Yes, Lieutenant Muldridge.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a moving second on the floor to reappoint Richard Mullins, Lester Hill, Jeff Newberry to the Cumberland Plateau Planning District Commission Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Do we have a name, or anybody, contact anybody to serve in for Sandy, or do we need to wait till next month?
Let me ask something here, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but this is for the Cumberland Plateau. This is mainly economic development. Am I saying that right, Shelby?
Yes.
So, I don't know, does it have, can she be a citizen?
If named citizen appointment.
You know, just a, just a thought.
And I understand that.
Yeah, I think that would be the, I don't know.
Well, the others, the way the bylaws are written, my understanding, you know, it has to be a Board of Supervisor member. We have Ron and Shelby, and the other are considered citizen appointments.
We're the executive board, and then you have to have four other board members, two other board members.
I think she probably could.
I, I don't think it would be forbidden.
Yeah. And then you talked to Scotty recently about the.
I don't know that. You know, it's just a thought.
We would have time if you want to table it, and let's ask Scotty if she qualifies.
We can, because we got to June 30th, we go next week.
Because they won't meet until, is it July?
No, and that's fine. That's good.
It'll be our July meeting that they would attend.
Would you be willing if you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, then we'll table that and find out. You two, if y'all can find out with you being on the executive board.
Yeah, we got a meeting Thursday night, so we'll be.
Okay, all right. Moving on to number five, the Industrial Development Authority, which is Mark Vanover's, uh, term is up from having to fill the unexpired term of Matthew Fuller, which I think is probably a Clintwood District appointment on there.
One of them is at large.
I've, I've talked to Mark.
Oh, that might be at large.
Thanks, Clintwood.
Mark, and we, I'd like to table that until June, if that'd be all right. He needs a little bit of time to think about it.
You making a motion to table?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to table.
I'll second it.
I don't know about.
I have talked to Mr. Lambert, and he said that he would be willing to serve another term if the board was in pleasure for him.
Is that your pleasure?
Yes. And I make, and I make that motion from him being in my district.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a moving second on the floor to table the Clintwood District Appointment of Mark Vanover till next month. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. We have a moving second on the floor that we probably should have voted on the other one beforehand.
Yeah.
But there's a moving second on the floor to reappoint Bradley Lambert, who has been serving for two years, the unexpired term of Alan Kempton from him passing away for another four years. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Moving on to number six, which is the Lonsdale Pine Regional Library Board Trustee. And that lady that serves on that is Carol Lee Newsom.
I make a motion that we reappoint her. She does a great job on that board.
Okay.
I'll second it.
A moving second to reappoint Carol Newsom to the Lonsdale Pine Regional Library Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. And the next one is the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority Board of Directors.
I make a motion that we appoint Mike Yates.
I'll second it.
Okay.
It'd be worth it. I thought there's Mike sitting there, I couldn't see.
Okay, we have a moving second on the floor to appoint Mike Yates from Mount Baker Ridge onto this board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Mike, glad to have you.
I think that has some big potential out there, and I think you're the man to help along.
And.
I said, I think that has some big potential, and I think you're the man to help, help it grow.
There's a lot to do and a lot to be done.
Yep.
Moving on to.
And now you've got plenty of time to do.
Moving on to number eight, which is the Southwest Virginia Community College Board of Directors. This is, Mr. Bud Phillips has been on that, and, until next month.
I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Phillips for that position.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a moving second to reappoint Mr. Bud Phillips to back on the Southwest Virginia Community College Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And now we are down to Mr. Evans taking over.
Oh, buddy, you go ahead and finish, finish yourself.
Which we are down to number I, the electronic meeting policy, if Mr. Barton wants to explain that, or Mr. Sturgill.
Yeah, there's been some recent changes in the Virginia code dealing with what's outlined as far as for electronic meetings, obviously, and we've talked about this a little bit in the past. The more leniency with remote participation in meetings, that kind of came about due to COVID. We had some of the updates previously in our, in our electronics meeting policy, but it didn't exactly mirror the code, exactly, because, you know, during a state of emergency, you can have. you know, during a state of emergency, you can have a completely remote meeting without a quorum present. And so what, what this electronic meeting policy does is just update what we currently have in accordance with what the Virginia code states. And I would ask for your approval.
Now, I mentioned, I'll echo Will on this, of course, um, you know, as he said, you have to have the physical quorum here. But also the process is a little different to request the remote participation. You know, the person going to be out is going to notify the chair, um, and, uh, we actually have to adopt a resolution at the beginning of the meeting of whether, uh, there's an Exhibit A on page seven that approves the remoteness or, uh, page eight that disapproves the remoteness. And of course, it's got the proper boxes here as to why that you, uh, are going to be out. Uh, the reasons it has to qualify with one of these reasons here, so is that correct, Mr. Sturgill?
That, that is correct.
Just, I will have to remember that, um, between us, you know, to try to make sure we get that resolution in.
Was it the only four reasons you could use it to be?
They've changed.
It is now with the.
What's that?
We've already approved this on PSA.
Yeah, and you have to have a form.
Yeah, she had to have the physical form present.
You have to have a, one of those reasons.
And vacation's allowed to, it's under.
That's what I'm saying, vacation, is that allowed?
It, it's allowed. It's under four or personal matter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Per, that statement, personal matter is pretty wide open.
It, it's, it's pretty wide open, so.
Yes.
Va- vacation, personal matter wouldn't.
Yes.
And with that personal, there's a cap, um, I think, to meetings.
It's two a year, isn't it?
Two a year, I believe.
Well, I make a motion that we.
Medical's unlimited still?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That we approve the le, the electronics meeting policy as presented to us.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a moving second on the floor, uh, to approve as presented for our electronic meeting policy. To upgrade, uh, update a couple of things in it via the Code of Virginia. Um, any, any other comments? Okay, uh, hearing none. All in favor of approving this, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. No opposes. We're down to number nine, Mr. Evans, if you want to take over on.
No, ma'am, you go ahead and finish, please. You're, you're locked in here.
Oh, oh, we've been moving on along.
I know, and I don't want to disrupt anything.
You see who the main problem is now.
Yeah, I know. I know.
All right, we're down to number, uh, nine, other business.
Just kidding.
And I guess this is where.
Nine A, C, and D.
Nine A, C, and.
D.
Uh, the B fell under the other thing, didn't it?
That's where A, C, and D with the attendance.
Okay, go ahead with nine A, which is part of the amendment.
It is, it's part of the addendum that you have before you hear.
Uh, Ms. Willis is familiar with this, being our, uh, Board Supervisor's member on the PSA. Uh, recently, the PSA has applied for a, a grant, a one and a half million dollar grant for, um, Centennial Heights, some work on the sewer lines, Centennial Heights and additional work. It's replacing a little over three thousand, three thousand one hundred nineteen linear feet of ten inch ductile iron sewage pipe with PVC, thirteen manholes. And, um, this is going to benefit, um, sixty-one households, which is two hundred and fifty-six residents. Basically with this, Cumberland Plateau is needing me to sign, um, as part of the project management team, as the project grant administrator. Before I would sign anything, I felt like this needed to come to the board for approval for, uh, our participation in this grant. We have to participate with PSA where you are the governing body in this grant, this, uh, ARC grant for a million and a half dollars, so.
Madam Chair, I move that we allow Mr. Barton the authority to sign this.
I second it.
Okay. Moving second on the floor to allow Mr. Barton to, um, uh, to sign as the project grant administrator on this grant. All in favor, please say aye.
Please step up a bit. Uh, Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
I'm a sit on PSA. Can I vote on this?
I believe so, yes.
Yep.
I vote aye.
Okay, all ayes on that then. Moving on to nine C, Mr. Barton.
Sure. I'll start us out on this and then kind of hand this off to, uh, Mr. Evans. Of course, with the devastation that we received from the, uh, storms, uh, last Tuesday night, uh, as I think Dana and Rhonda Smithers had, uh, mentioned earlier in the meeting. You know, in these areas, especially, um, right after the storm, few drove down, I mean, it looks like a war zone in places, you know, where there was a day cutting into where Ms. Cronkot lived, just trying to get there. And if you look now, all the trees that are cut on the side of the road, you know, all this stuff, and even the night we were out cutting, we were just trying to cut a path and we were throwing things to the side. And so the next step is VDOT's coming in and they're taking the logs and the stuff that can be burnt for firewood. They're picking all those up that the residents didn't already cut for their own use or anything, and they're taking those along the roadways, uh, to Camp Eighteen because they burn wood at Camp Eighteen. The inmates will work those up. Then they're coming back through and getting all the brush, uh, and debris along the sides of the road. And I'd ask, you know, um, Wade, you know, if, uh, you know, say a tree was on the other side of the road, it falls on the road and lands in the neighbor's yard. You know, we've cut it up and threw it aside to get a path through, how much of that tree do you clean up? And they said, we're going to take all that because it fell from the road on that. So we don't know exactly what they're going to take. And right now, I think we're trying to be patient. It's hard for the residents right now. They've got this mess everywhere. They've endured all this, been without power for days and stuff. But we're trying to be patient, let VDOT come in and do their thing. And they're going to take all this brush, this central location, bring a chipper in and chip it. What we're looking at doing here, um, Mr. Sturgill had worked up this resolution, um, in your package that would be designating a community improvement project, uh, for these areas impacted by the storms. And in doing that, what it allows is for, uh, the drug court participants and the community workforce program participants to come in and, um, do work in these areas here. They would be able to help with cleanup work. I think Mr. Evans has received some, uh, or has some, not received anything, but you have promises of donations, I think, uh, to help with the funds to rent a chipper if that were to be needed or whatever the needs might be, uh, but try to get a designation so that, you know, if there's a need after VDOT, those are a thing that we can use some of the drug court, community workforce participants to come in and do some work there. That would also allow us, by doing that, to have, say, a litter controller, somebody to be able to come in and supervise those, uh, individuals while they're working. You know, they are a county employee and then, you know, they have a county truck that would be pulling the, the equipment and things. Is that correct? Mr. Sturgill, would you allow that?
Yes.
Um, so right now, as far as extent, we don't know what the need's going to be, but it would allow them to, you know, if the need is there after VDOT does this work, to, to do the work.
And, and the ultimate authority is with the court under the Code of Virginia, whether to permit it or not. But in order for there to even be the consideration of any work done, uh, especially on any sort of private property, under this code section, it requires that, that, a locality be the sponsor of what's deemed a community improvement project. And so that's what this is, is a resolution that, at, at least gives the ability to be able to begin that conversation. And then ob- obviously, if, if the judge does grant it, uh, for, for those workers who are allowed to, to be able to do that work by code, um, to, to be able to perform those kind of work and duties.
Madam Chair, may I?
I've got a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, let's hear, let's hear what you say first.
Oh, well, I, I just wanted to double check on something, um, are we clear from any liability and are they, you know, with, um, they're on private land, we have these people working for us on private land?
The brokers themselves were, right, as far, I mean.
There's a liability statute that covers the locality for this thing that we went over.
I, and I wanted to make sure that applied. I'm not trying to shoot it down. I'm just asking for clarification, that's all. Okay, I'm fine.
I think it's more than fine.
May I?
Yes.
So there's a lot to say on this. First, um, I want to thank Sheriff Fleming and Larry Barton and Scotty Owens and each member of the Clintwood Fire Department, Haysi Fire Department, Clinchco Fire Department and other members of the Sheriff's Office for being out until three in the morning clearing roadways for families. That's my first and foremost thank you. I was in Wise. I couldn't get back in time to go with them and get down into Skeet Rock and down into Smith Ridge and down into Lewis Stone Drive. Um, I just couldn't get there, but they were there and I cannot thank them enough, uh, for being there, uh, getting the road clear because if you weren't, it, it wasn't going to happen. So they literally started, I guess, crossing the bridge and, at, at Skeet Rock. Well, I guess you went to Smith Ridge first.
We saw Mulridge, Big Smith and Mulridge.
And, and cut literally from eight, nine, eight at night to two in the morning, cutting people out, so. That's first. Second, um, the devastation is just indescribable. Uh, thankfully, there's not any homes that were damaged. Too bad. Uh, but we have unfortunately a older demographic in this area of the county and, and a lot, you know, most of the county. And they're, they can't, and they have no, uh, ability to clean this up themselves. I've helped file several insurance claims with people and that has gone pretty well for the folks that do have insurance. Some of our local contractors are starting already on some of the cleanup. Uh, once the adjuster comes and sees the property and approves it and they, the, uh, contractor, you know, tells them how much it's going to be paid. But there's some that aren't, that are, they don't have insurance, they don't have, uh, family and they live on fixed income and can't clean this up themselves. So thankfully, uh, Larry and myself and Will, um, got together and come up with this proposal. Um, I know that Larry, uh, at my urging, had reached out to all of you to see if we, uh, could do this or what your thoughts were. And it was met with some, uh, hesitation, but I appreciate Will in getting this resolution fixed for me, uh, on pretty short notice. And I have talked to our Community Works Director and he's got every man on hand, ready to go to wherever we need them immediately. And I know that our Circuit Court will approve this, so, um, I've been down there every day. I was down there today. I was down there yesterday. Um, it's, um, it's, we've had good weather and so it could have always been worse, but we have a lot of people that we can help through this resolution. And I would certainly appreciate the board's consideration. Uh, in a list of my thank yous, I want to thank Dickinson County Behavioral Health for reaching out to me and offering a two-week rental of a chipper. That's about, mm, gonna, I don't know yet, it's going to be about a thousand dollars. I want to thank Haysi Clinchco Lions Club for reaching out to me, um, and everybody else that's reached out. But it's, uh, it could have been a lot worse, but we still got a long way to go. On the VDOT thing, Larry, and even more important for us to approve this, I'm not as optimistic as we thought after talking to the gentleman that they're going to be. They're down there today a little bit chipping and, but I'm still not so sure that, uh, it's, they're going to come through like we thought. So one thing I would want to consider is getting some of the big logs and trees. I'm going to ask a couple of the profit, property owners I know in that area, going to pile up some blocks, maybe have them split some wood, take it to some of the people that I know that burned wood and need it. And so there's a very large amount of positive things that are going to come out of this resolution and I, I would hope you support it. But that's all I'd want to say. And if I left anybody out thanking them, um, forgive me, there's so many people that stepped up, but the people I named, um, I know were literally out with a chainsaw at two in the morning, so.
I do have another point I want to make, just, I, I'm not opposed to this at all, but we should use the VDOT as much as possible. But I do want to clarify something. And the reason I'm asking is, I do remember when we looked at these work release down at the transfer station, there's a statute that covers this. But I also remember that when we send our trucking shop up one of these roads to do gravel and stuff, they have to go house to house and get them to sign off. That's the thing I want to clarify because we, we have, that was the liability thing I was concerned about. And it can work the other way, too. And.
I think there's no question that, um, you would need the property owner's permission in order to.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but no, but we physically have them sign something when they do it. That's why I'm asking because that, when we do gravel and that. That's what I'm getting at. That's all I wanted to add to this.
I know, we had to pay once. Uh, they graded a road without permission. And we had to pay, uh, for damages.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the resolution as drafted.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a moving second on the floor to approve the resolution, um, designed for a community improvement project sponsored by Dickinson County Board of Supervisors. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Um, moving on, I believe we moved number, uh, five.
To nine D.
Down to nine D on the, uh, recognition of the attendance. Josh?
Yeah, I don't see, um.
Yeah.
I don't see.
And they haven't been.
I've been messaging back and forth with him, so.
Madam Chair, uh, if it's okay with you and the board, could we just pass that, please? Or, or whatever your pleasure is in moving the agenda.
That's fine, we can pass it.
We can visit that if we come out. Uh, number five on the agenda, the original number five got moved to nine D, it's an attendance recognition.
Move it to after, somebody recognizing some, uh, a student that has been a perfect attendance through the eighth grade. Move it to after, drop it down to after, um, closed session. Okay. Need a moving second on that?
So you want to table it or you going to wait till?
We're going to move it to after closed session because I think they're going.
Whatever Madam Chair wants to do with it, I'd ask if we keep it alive, however you think we can keep it alive.
We need a, we need a motion to move, um, the, uh, number five attendance recognition that was moved to other business, item number D. We now need a motion to move it on down to after closed session.
And we have to amend the agendas, what we need to do. Right, to move it.
Correct. Technically to amend the agendas to make it.
I guess, um, if we move it, what are we doing really?
Giving them time.
Oh, he's coming then.
As far as I know, they're coming.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Can it be left there and go back to it or do we need to amend the agenda?
Could we just not pass it? I'll do whatever Madam Chair wants. I don't, I'm not.
Well, if the girl is going to come or the student is going to come tonight, at some point, then, you know, we could go ahead and get it done because school's about ready to go out. I mean, I don't have a problem moving it, but we just need to do it in a proper motion.
Well, I, I mean, the other part is we can just pass over it for now and then if she comes back, we can amend the agenda to put it back on.
Okay.
When we know she's.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, then we'll go that route.
Okay.
All right, now we're down to number 10, which is sched, scheduling public hearings at our June, uh, board meeting. One is to, uh, a public hearing to adopt an ordinance to allow county agencies to pay a bonus not to exceed five hundred dollars on June twenty-seventh at five forty-five P.M. Motion and second on that to do that?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, have that public hearing.
Second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
We got a moving second on the floor to, uh, have a public hearing at five forty-five P.M. on June twenty-seventh for the adoption of the ordinance for county agencies bonus paid not to exceed five hundred. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye as well. And number B is to schedule a public hearing for the Board of Supervisor's salary ordinance on June twenty-seventh at five fifty-five P.M.
I make a motion that we have that ordinance at five fifty-five.
Okay.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
All right, moving second on the floor to also have a public hearing on June twenty-seventh at five fifty-five for the Board of Supervisor's salary ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Brings us down to number 10, I mean, number 11, which is closed session.
Uh, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we enter into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one to discuss personnel matters and Virginia Code Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A five, economic development matters.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Moving second to go into closed session, um, based on Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A and two thirty-seven eleven A one and five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. We are now in closed session. Aye as well, we are now in closed session.
Okay. Uh, we are now at a closed session and do I hear a motion in a second to certify the only matters going into closed session was the items discussed?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second it.
Okay, we have a move in second that the only thing, uh, that the personnel matters and economic development was the only things going into closed session that we discussed and I will do a roll call vote. Ms. Willis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Sluss?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And yes for myself. Number thirteen on our list is matters discussed in closed session. Are there any motions and seconds coming from closed session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we extend an offer of employment to Tristan Hayes for the vacant maintenance position.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moving second to offer, uh, employment to Tristan Hayes for maintenance, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Any others?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we extend an offer of employment for a vacant truck shop position to Mr. Dylan Dooley.
It is a part-time position too.
And has a part-time status.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a move in second on the floor for offer, uh, part-time employment to, uh, Michael Dylan Do- Dooley at the Solid Waste. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Now we will go to, I'll let Mr. Evans take care of the recognition that he has.
Uh, Madam Chair, thank you so much. Uh, we have a young lady here with us from Dickinson County, uh, down in the Davis Ridge area of Dickinson County. She's, uh, just an exceptional young lady, uh, with an exceptional family and we have a lot of, uh, students, uh, exceptional students and families in Dickinson County, but the specific thing that I'd asked for to be put on the agenda for Riley, uh, was that she's done something that in my opinion is pretty remarkable, uh, in this day and age with COVID, in this day and age with just, uh, uh, our generation of children. Uh, she has had since pre-K, uh, ten consecutive years of perfect attendance and that is just unheard of. Uh, to me, she's going into the ninth grade at Ridgeview High School and so I just felt like that it was very important that we, uh, recognize her and her family 'cause that's such a big accomplishment and as you all know, as we employ a lot of people, uh, showing up for work, uh, is eighty percent of life, Riley.
Maybe.
So you're gonna be eighty percent ahead, eighty per- ahead of eighty percent of the people when you compete for a job with or you compete in college with, so, uh, it's really remarkable what you've done with the support of your mom and dad and your grandparents and I just wanna say congratulations. Got a certificate for you if you would make it come up and with our other board members and we'll take your picture, is that okay?
I used to just not go, sometimes go, but didn't want to.
I learned, I learned.
I can't see how you didn't have somehow six.
You'd be blessed with good health.
She must have. We're going up here.
Take off these.
Maybe you might need to come over here.
No, that's all right.
We need to get, uh, baby, we're on that side also.
Push on, move on.
Going up first. I gotta come up. This is my way to my. There it is. Yes. I never get really good to know all you kids growing up, but I know your mom and dad.
Get right here with us, first of all, okay?
Yep.
Proud of you.
You get up first with your family.
Chair. All right, let me get this one to chair if I'm getting one, so everybody look here on the count of three, one, two, three, another one. Gotcha.
Great job.
Great job, Ron.
One, two, three.
Why don't you let Ron get back first?
All right, got you.
Are you going into the ninth grade?
Going into the ninth grade.
Oh, wow. Congratulations, especially between days.
Of course, mother says she's the first student to ever have pre-K, perfect attendance, so, pretty good. Good?
Yeah, I'm glad.
Hope y'all have a good evening. Thanks for being patient with us.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Keep having a good summer, Riley.
I hope you don't ever get sick.
See you.
Sometimes you'll get sick.
Yeah, thank y'all. Congratulations.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna understand.
Okay, moving on to number item fourteen. Okay, moving on to number item 14, our supervisor's comments. I will start on the far end and ask Ms. Willis if she has any comments.
Not really. I just think it's been a good meeting and I'm proud of that Riley Mullins for nine years, 10 years with being absent. And I feel for Josh's district where they've lost Charlotte's trees and all that. Really thought about him. Appreciate everybody that worked to help get people out too.
Okay, Ms. Sluss, you have a comment?
I wish everybody a happy Memorial Day and remember the sacrifice that mostly men, but women too, have made for our country. And I appreciate them putting the crosses up next to the courthouse. They did a good job. And the pictures of the people who have served and died, gave their life for our freedom. I'm very grateful to live in the United States.
And for our county. Mr. Evans?
As Will said, Ms. Sluss, would encourage everybody to take a look at our veteran banners. We have about 120 hanging all in Dickinson County in front of the courthouse, across from the courthouse, and in the town of Hayneside. If you've not seen the town of Hayneside's veteran memorial, or took the time to walk in there and read those names on the bricks, it's very humbling. So I would encourage if you're out and about and in that area to walk in that gated area and read those names of citizens that have served the United States Armed Forces that are from Dickinson County. Reiterate my gratitude to Mr. Barton, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Owens, and all the other people that were on in the trenches during the storm. I really just can't thank them enough and wish I could have been with you and sorry that I wasn't. But nonetheless, we made it through. Power was restored. 3,000 people without power and the last person was restored on Monday. So that's a pretty good turnaround, less than a week. And I really appreciate AEP, Lester Hill for keeping me informed every minute of the way. I drove him nuts. I drove Wade Belcher with VDOT nuts. Still going to drive them nuts probably because of mess. Thank you for, Mr. Sturgill, Mr. Barton for the resolution. Thank you for member supporting that. And I hope that you'll be supportive as try to move forward and help people clean up this mess because it's going to be a long, drawn-out ordeal. But thank you all very much.
Mr. Peters?
I'm good.
Okay. I just want to say I thank everybody for their comments. We have had a relatively good meeting tonight. I appreciate that. I appreciate the people that's been here, the people who watches us on live feed on YouTube. I appreciate you doing that. We just want to serve this county. We want to serve our citizens in this county to the best of our ability. We want to be able to try to help as many and would love to try to help everyone, but the criteria just does not let us do that always. I do feel for Skew Rock and all of the area down through there. I have not drove over there, but the pictures and hearing people talk, this is the time that we all need to love our neighbors as ourselves and open our door and try to help each other. We come together and do better when we try to be cordial and nice and compassionate and helpful. I congratulate Riley Mullins for having attended school. I need to get her to talk to my grandson on the importance of going to school every day. Because he just does not want to go to school. But I appreciate that. I appreciate all y'all for attending and...
I thank you for handling the meeting. Very good job. Thank you so much, Pete.
Thank you. I thank you for your confidence in me doing it. Item 15 is we are not adjourning this meeting. We need to have a motion and a second to recess this meeting till we meet back in two weeks on June the 6th at 5:00 p.m. for budget hearing.
I'll second it, Madam.
Okay, we have a move in second to recess until June 6th at 5:00 p.m. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well.